I just wanted to start out with a couple of comments. Today is September 11th. I think everyone will remember where they were. It's still emotional for me to even remember, talk about that day or anything, but to think about the fire department, police officers, first responders, people who are just on a plane that day trying to go somewhere. People who are at work, who are going to work, the many who suffered physical and mental injuries that they eventually succumbed to after. It's another day that will live in infamy, unfortunately. So a pause for a moment, and then when you're ready, you can all join me for a heartfelt pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let's start with the treasurer's report from August 2024. Rich, whenever you're ready.
Sure. Since it's only the second month in the fiscal year, there's really not much noteworthy. Some of the line items, if you looked at the line item report, look like there's significant expenditures against the budget. But that's because a lot of our, a lot of those items are due in full at the beginning of the fiscal year, like insurance and workers' comp. But others, we pay out through the course of the year. So some of them, you see these large percentage expenditures of the budget. We also, I wanted to note that we've drawn 739,000 in the ARPA funds from the general fund to use for operating expenses. So that shows up in there as well. That's about it.
Thank you. Any questions for Rich? Thanks so much. Then we'll turn it over to Todd for the town manager's report. Good evening, Todd. You are on mute.
Good evening. Thanks. I'll try to make this brief as much as possible. But there's a lot to update you on about staff activities and initiatives over the past month. We, a number of these items that I'm going to mention will be discussed later this evening, and I'll note as much. We have staff assisted with the Bethesda Market Park Development Project and attended meetings on both project coordination and park design to be discussed later. We communicated with Corso Chevy Chase on their tree inventory and their tree removal permits and appeals. They have submitted their permit application, and we are on track to hear the, for the council to hear the appeals in October. October will start, our arborist will start processing the tree removal application and, and permits on Monday. And we are well, well situated to have their appeal heard in October. Staff assisted with analyzing and publicizing proposed county multifamily housing initiatives. And we've also addressed proposed clarifications to state law related to municipal regulatory authority and attended meetings with both state delegates and municipal leaders on that matter. We continue to work with MCDOT, the Department of Transportation, the county's Department of Transportation, and Purple Line officials on fencing and barrier improvements along the purple line adjacent to the town. We will have a full cost estimate by September 30th for that work. And then we'll be scheduled to have a public hearing on the expenditure, proposed expenditure on, or at the council's October 9th meeting. There are glass samples that are on display in the town hall right now in different opacities. I believe that 30, 50, and 70% opacity. And we'll also keep those on display in the town office. If you want to ask residents to take a look at them and perhaps give us their opinions. We also have received final or close to final renderings that we requested for how these, this, these improvements will look in a, in a two dimensional way from, from the, both the ramps to the bridge and on the bridge itself. I will review those in more detail. I just received them at 5:30 this evening. So I'll review those in more detail to see if they're ready for prime time. My guess is I won't have anything else to add to them. I've reviewed them pretty briefly. They look very good to me. They're a very good representative example of what residents would see as they're walking on these ramps and the bridge, and we'll include those on the website for resident review as well. Irene Barney and I met with MCDOT Michael Paylor, who is the division chief for traffic engineering and operations in the Montgomery County Department of Transportation to discuss a number of issues related to traffic management along the Wisconsin Avenue corridor, as well as some other issues. We, we spoke about signal timing along Wisconsin Avenue from East West Highway to Bradley Lane to address the gridlock, block the box issues that residents have reported experiencing. We discussed signal timing and operation from the, at the light on Wisconsin onto Willow Lane to allow longer turning phases and, and prevent, possibly prevent U-turns during certain hours to allow more through movement of vehicles on the green signal. We also discussed traffic management ideas for Leland Street between 46th and Wisconsin in anticipation of the Bethesda Market Park build out. Michael agreed to, to do a number of things for us. He's, he's very amenable and willing to work with the town and very responsive to our requests. He agreed to do a number of things, to undertake a corridor timing assessment on Wisconsin to determine whether any signalization modifications need to be made to allow more throughput of traffic without blocking the box. He agreed to review signal operations and timing at the light on Wisconsin at Willow. And he also agreed to work with M dot SHA on reviewing options for lane divisions, possible lane narrowing and, and signalization on Leland between 46th and Wisconsin. As I said, in anticipation of the Bethesda Market Park build out and, and effective management of traffic that exits from the underground parking lot that will have egress onto Leland. We also discussed tangentially enforcement issues. Obviously, that's under the purview of the Montgomery County Police Department. And we agreed to involve MCPD in enforcement of the traffic management in Wisconsin Avenue, including block the box and parking restrictions in the loading areas once the assessment is completed and, and any signal adjustments are made. Steph also continued to discuss overgrown vegetation policies and enforcement issues. As a reminder, the council will be holding hearing on our vegetation management policy, this, excuse me, ordinance this evening. And the council approved a new regulatory standard, or will approve, assumedly, a new regulatory standard of passable in the code, which is less specific than we currently have now, while having or establishing the specific standard, namely ADA accessibility in the, in the town policy that the council approved in July. Staff continued to manage town park and waterway improvement projects, including Zimmerman Park renovations and Coquelin Run stabilization. I'm happy to report that Coquelin Run is, I think Dave was safe to say, it's, it's done, right? All but done. And we, I thought I'd have to bring bad news to you tonight about Zimmerman, but it actually is turning out to be good news from the latest we've heard. We have been going back and forth, as you all know, for years, frankly, with WSSC on, on variances, on permits to perform this work that's been approved by the council. When we thought all was done a week or so ago, we got all the necessary paperwork, we were told, "Sorry, you have to wait until we do water and sewer improvements in the park." Well, they've got back to them and said, "We, this is the first time we've ever heard of this. We've never been told before that." We've asked multiple times what kind of work you have planned, and you've told us nothing. You're now telling us we have to wait until your work is complete." And they could not tell us what work was contemplated. So Dave persisted, and they said, "We only need to do sewer work. We'll have it done by October 4th." And we were just told today, "They're coming in tomorrow and should be done by Friday." So we, that's par for the course for WSSC, but good news is we hope that they will have completed their work that's necessary for us to, to start ours by the end of this weekend. We still have to nail down our contractor and get a date where, when work can start on Zimmerman, but we're hoping in the next two months, we can hopefully get most of that completed. I hope that's a, a safe assessment, Dave. Who knows? We, we hope. We, we definitely hope we can get it done this fall.
Yeah.
Into early winter, possibly, which is not a bad thing, actually, given the work we're doing and, and the side stabilization that can stabilize over the winter months. And so it's, we're hopeful we can do that. But I'll keep the council up to date. Staff continued to work with the town civil engineer on plans for stormwater management improvements on, on Leland Woodbine Streets, and that's still in the works. We continue planning for fall trash and treasures, provided, continue to provide project supports to town committees. And I sent the council an email about the committee for Montgomery Legislative Breakfast. It's going to be held on November 22nd at 7:00 AM at the Bethesda North Marriott. Sometimes in the past, we've gotten individual tickets. Sometimes we've gotten a table. I know that Rich can't attend. Barney and Irene will be attending. I don't know about Joy and Stephanie and whether you're available, but at this point, I, I suppose we would likely choose to buy individual tickets for Irene and Barney rather than buying a table unless there's sufficient interest in, in, you know, if Stephanie and Joy, you'd like to attend, and Barney and Irene are attending, then perhaps we can invite others to join us at a table that we were purchased. But if you could let me know if you're available to attend that, if you're interested and available, that would be helpful, so we can decide how to proceed.
Friday before Thanksgiving.
No, I definitely can't.
Okay. We got one dropped out and one maybe.
Okay.
Yeah.
Not a great time.
Friday before Thanksgiving?
Yeah.
It's, yes, right. Not a great time. No. Well, Joy, if you could let me know, that would be great. And then we can determine, probably we'll buy individual tickets, I'm assuming, but we'll figure that out. But that'd be, that'd be great if you could let me know. That concludes my staff report. Thanks.
Thank you, Todd. Does anyone have any questions? Please?
On the schedule for Zimmerman, thank you very much for that update. I was, I was going to ask about that anyway. We've been waiting for so long. The, my recollection is that you're undertaking through Phase One, and then you're going to come back to the council and ask for some further thinking regarding the extension of the path to where we now have the signalization, and also some other matters about the fencing. Do you still envision our getting to that point this fall? Something that will come to the council, say, in November? Or what, what's your sense of timing of when that further review will take place?
Dave, you want to take that one?
Yeah, I guess we, we have pared down the scope of the work for this deployment to what the council agrees for that Phase One work, you know, up to the crosswalk at Blackthorne, plus all of the grading work in the field. So certainly, we would be ready to come back to the council for Phase Two, you know, as soon as we get the grading done, probably. I'm still hopeful that we can do Phase Two very shortly after Phase One, because mobilizing the contractor can take some time. So if we can get the council to come to an agreement, you know, quickly, you know, it'd be better for the project just to get it knocked out. And the timing of that could be September or October.
Hey, our goal had been for all the, all the work, both phases, to be done before the winter sets in. So that's really set in the spring.
Yeah.
So I guess we should be open, if necessary, to meeting, sort of, yeah, work session right there on the site, whenever is appropriate. The regular schedule of town, town council meetings.
And I think we should be able to come to a concurrence about sort of the scope and what we want to do pretty quickly, once we get out there, once it's sort of laid out.
Is your thought, we're going to have to demobilize the contractor and remobilize him?
Depending on how quickly the council decides, you know, how to proceed.
Yeah, so we ought to do it quickly.
So, yeah, I mean, things like the concrete work and the flagstone, you know, it would be better if we can do that with one mobilization. I think the fence and some of the stabilization is going to be in the plantings are sort of a separate phase anyway. But sort of that hard capital work is better to do, do at once. So I'll, I'll be in touch once we sort of get a schedule from the contractor and we can meet out with the contractor and figure out what makes the best sense.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Dave.
Any other questions for Todd? I wanted to add one more thing. Todd, was the Capitol Crescent Trail Phase Two, the Department of Transportation came out with another, given the comments that we provided during a public hearing six weeks ago, seven weeks ago, I don't remember, they came back, what was, one of our main points was having a separate, an ability for a separate crossing across Willow Ford families with young children that are heading towards what will be the newly reinvigorated Elm Street Park, and in the meantime, it wouldn't interfere with the bicyclists that are using this path and, and training for the Tour de France, right? So the thing is that what came back was a bit of a mixing bowl concept of everyone still kind of coming together, but it, excuse me, it's a larger pad, which didn't make too much sense when Todd and I looked at it quickly. And so point being is that Todd is also going back to get some clarification and see if there might be another way that, that separates those spaces a little bit more distinctly. So just want to give an update on that. That's still moving forward.
Thanks, Irene. I reached out to Kevin Mann today to ask for a discussion on that matter.
Thank you. Great. With that, let's open it up to public comments. So this, we have two hearings this evening. A tree removal appeal at 4422 Wall Street and an ordinance to amend our, our overgrown vegetation management policy ordinance. If people have comments to make outside those two subjects, feel free to come on up to the podium. Please state your name and address for the record, and then we're happy to hear your comments. Up there, please. Thank you. Yes.
Thank you. My name is Robert Hunt, Bob Hunt, and I live at 7005 Meadow Lane. So what I want to talk about is the crosswalk that's being proposed. We're going to get a map on, you know, if possible, together. Don't worry, if we can't, I can.
Yes, I can. I can. I can put it up.
Okay, thank you. Make it easier for, to explain my comments. Okay, so.
Actually, we're going to need you in front of the microphone for those who are online listening.
Okay. No, it's okay. Okay. The first question is, do.
So that's true. Yeah, as long as you're talking into the microphone, you're good.
I can, I can pick it up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The first question is, do we need this? Do we need this crosswalk? To figure that out or to assess that, my wife and I did a traffic study of pedestrians walking during school rush hours, which would be in the morning and in the afternoon. We did it over two days, September 3rd and September 5th. What we found was that, on average, 1.5 children would use this crosswalk here. Maybe I'll go here. 1.5 children in the morning cross here. In the afternoon, an average of two children cross there. Now, in terms of adults, the number was a little bit higher. 3.5 used it in the morning, and no, one only used it in the afternoon. So my first question is, is it necessary? Now, the counterargument might be that, well, if we put a crosswalk there, we're going to get people crossing there. But I would argue, this is not a safe place to put for children to cross. If you look at the way Meadow Lane coming, this is coming from East West Highway, it curves up here, reaches sort of a plateau right up here, then goes a little straight and then turns back down again. If you look at Valley Place, it's almost like a hairpin turn coming down this way and turning this way. Fortunately, right now, it's a stop sign there. If it wasn't, it'd be very dangerous. No, I'm sorry. Comes down this way over here. So my point is, it's not an optimum place to put a crosswalk. You look at, because the visibility from all three sides is pretty bad. It also narrows. You can even see it's narrowing here. It's not a wide part Meadow Lane. And one thing, one other thing I want to mention is that I live at 700, 7005 Meadow Lane. We're losing our two parking spots, and we use them, so we don't want to lose them. And I'll stop there, but the paper goes into much more detail about all these things. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Sarah Wilson, and I reside with my husband Louis Lappin, who's also here at 7002 Valley Place. And if we could have the map back up that Bob Hunt was just showing, I can show you where our house is located, which is, you can see the roof right there where it says remove ramp. Yeah. So we live directly across the street from the Hunts across Valley and Meadow, where those two streets are adjoining. And in addition to the study that the Hunts have done, showing that there, you know, is a low, single-digit number of children and adults crossing in that section, I wanted to share that I commute downtown to the law firm where I work every day during this, times when the school buses are typically dropping people off at the school, and I have to take my car and go around that circle and then up Meadow towards Rosemary in Connecticut, and that is a very, very trafficky area in the morning. And it's sort of, as Bob has explained, a little bit of a mixing bowl. And what we see regularly is that children and their parents, a much larger number of them, cross Meadow, a few houses down where there is a crosswalk, and there is a sidewalk for them to walk from that crossing point across Meadow. I'm not sure the name of the cross street, but it's Sycamore. They cross there, and then they walk down the sidewalk up to the school. That is a far safer route. It is the route that children and parents currently take, and they sometimes park in front of our house as well. So in addition to, you know, the lack of necessity, I think to move the crosswalk in front of the Hunts house almost becomes like an interactive nuisance in the most dangerous place for kids to cross. One other factor I want to mention is that a few houses away from the Hunts house, where this proposed crosswalk would be potentially located, as some folks may know, there is a very high-ranking member of the federal judiciary who resides on Meadow. Since last year, possibly earlier, with several controversial decisions that come down, there are two Marshals cars that are parked 24/7 on Meadow Lane, just a few houses away from this proposed crosswalk. When I was driving home from my evening commute, there was one day when a certain controversial decision came down, when the Marshals were standing in front of this location, this residence with guns, with weapons. Lou and I told our daughter that day, "Do not walk the dog on Meadow Lane, that area, just in case. We want to avoid any safety incidents." So I'm not questioning at all or challenging the need for that Marshall's presence, but I think to encourage children to be walking potentially down Meadow, crossing at this location to get to the school as opposed to the way that currently, the way the traffic pattern currently exists, which is down Meadow in front of our house, I think is far safer. And we're all here in support of public safety, especially for kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question? So when the kids walk up that side of, of Meadow, they're going to have to cross to get over to the school. Where do they usually cross?
It's not visible in this photo, I don't think, but maybe.
Yeah, there's a diagonal crosswalk at the intersection with Beachwood and Valley.
It's, it's. Right. It's about a half a dozen houses. Right.
No, it's about two houses down.
Oh, so it's two houses.
So the, the way that they cross, Rich, to answer your question, is they continue down Valley Place? And then, right.
So most of the traffic is coming from that direction, going in front, on the cross, excuse me, to the extent people need to cross Meadow, they are doing so just a few houses above.
Okay, let's, let's keep the. Okay, let's keep, keep, so we can listen to.
And then there's another, there's another crosswalk, as you may be aware, for children that are crossing Connecticut Avenue.
Yes.
With crossing guards going down Rosemary directly to the school.
Right.
So that's one sort of major traffic flow, and I think the other major traffic flow is down Meadow and Valley. But very few people, as Bob's study has shown, come down Meadow going north, in part because there's no sidewalk there. There's no consistent sidewalk there. And then crossing there, just, there's, there just isn't a need. That's not the, the pathway that children and adults currently use. It's way too narrow. I would encourage you to look at the pictures in the back, which show, you know, a UPS truck blocking visibility parked in front of the Hunts house, that, you know, creates that, that combination of it being a very narrow street, as well as the circular, the, the traffic coming from multiple different directions, I think it makes this the worst possible place in terms of children's safety for a crosswalk.
Thank you.
Hi, John Reese. I live with my wife Elizabeth Willner at 7007 Meadow. I just want to briefly sort of echo what's been said here and endorse everything that's been said. When we saw the original plan that went through the island and then this plan, both Elizabeth and I thought, why is this happening? But this, this felt like while everyone is doing things in goodwill, this felt a lot like a, a solution in search of a problem. We kept looking to see whether kids crossed there. We almost never saw that, and Bob's study seems to confirm that. In addition, at the, the tip of that triangle, that's the, the sort of the playground area of the school, that gate at the top of the triangle is now closed, and it's been closed for some time. So before that, yeah, right there, before that, yeah, people did cross. And it, I mean, kids were playing in the playground, and if they left, they actually did go that way. That doesn't happen anymore because it's, it's, it's closed. So I'm, I'm not sure why we need that. And I seem to recall from the last, or maybe it wasn't the last meeting, a previous meeting that I had joined by Zoom, it was stated that the school said that they'd like it. And my impression then and now is, well, of course, the school would say they like it, because the school doesn't really know what's happening there. If you ask someone, "Should we put in a crosswalk to make kids safer?", the obvious answer is yes. The question is, does it make kids safer and is it needed? And frankly, I don't see the need for it. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments? And online as well, if you have an opportunity? Any other topics for public comment? Of course, yes.
Just to make sure I understand. I have it stated here for the opposite side of the street, 7005. You have the left, south side, and then the right, north side. Could you just explain what you mean by those two?
So I guess the north side is sideways.
So I guess the north side is sideways, school is, the school is on, no, that's the west side. So the west side is where the school is on, we live on the east side. Going north, you would be hitting East West Highway and going south, you hit Rosemary. So, so I didn't want to use right and left because it depends on where you're facing, but.
Opposite side of the street, so I assumed you were, and then these are two subheadings underneath that, I just wanted to understand what's.
What's the question, that what's on the opposite side of the street?
I'm just reading your headings, I'm trying to figure out what the data for.
So. So what's. Oh, I'm sorry, okay, now I understand, okay, so the opposite side of the street would be if, when children come down Valley Place, they can either cross straight and basically go to our house, and that's where the average is 1.5. Or they can turn right and stay on the opposite side of the street from us and continue down toward Rosemary on the other side of the street. And what I found was that route had very little traffic also. I think it's like one or two kids, I don't have my glasses, but it's, it's, it's not very heavily trafficked. The most.
When you say left, south side, are you referring to the south side heading further on Meadow out toward Rosemary?
Yes, yes, south means going toward Rosemary, toward Washington. Oh, thank you, yeah, toward Meadow Lane.
There you're referring to also Meadow Lane going.
Going north toward East West Highway.
I just wanted to make sure, I wasn't sure whether south side meant south side of Meadow or south side of Valley Place.
Well, actually, that's where I used south and north because they both, you understand, yeah, because that's why I didn't want to use left and right because then would have been confusing. But I realized south and north is also, people don't think that way, sorry. Yeah, same thing with east and west, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Any other public comments? Okay, public comment is closed. We'll now move to our public hearing. The first up is a tree removal appeal for forty four twenty two Wall Street. Ron, I'll open this up to you first and whoever's here on, thank you, sir.
Sure, so the hearing will begin with the presentation by the applicant. There is a staff report that has been entered into the record. The staff report reflects that there are no see, no emails to supplement the record as of today, is that, that correct, Dave?
Remains correct, yes.
Thank you. After the applicant's presentation, oh, please let me say to the applicant, the the council has had the opportunity to review the application. I'm not sure that everyone reviewed the supplemental materials that you submitted today. So please don't feel like you have to restate everything in the record, but if you want to focus on the supplemental materials, that would probably be most efficient. After the applicant's presentation, we'll have the opportunity for council questions. After that, anyone else attending the hearing who'd like to make a comment in support or in opposition or to ask questions of the applicant will have the opportunity to do so. The applicant will then be given a rebuttal. The record will close and the council will deliberate and then entertain a motion directing me to prepare a decision. The decision's not final until it has been written and signed and that will usually take about a week. If it is granted, please note that you cannot proceed until that decision is issued and the subsequent permit is issued as well. With that, we'll ask the applicant to proceed and if the applicant will please identify themselves for the record and anyone else who speaks do the same. Thank you very much.
Thank you ever for taking the time, my name is Kevin Kehoe, I'm the president and owner of Kehoe Group, customer builder. Application for tree removal variance at forty four twenty two Wall Street. Like you said, I'll cut nail down on the supplemental information that I sent over today and apologies for getting that to you at the late hour, we just got some additional information from CAS Engineering late yesterday. The tree in question is a river birch tree that is in the front yard. Or the home that is currently there and structure that's currently there will be torn down and a new home will be built. And the reason for the need to take down the tree and the variance is because of several different reasons that that tree, in my opinion, will not survive construction. And that the biggest and most important topic is that because of the overdig, and if you look at that site plan that I, that I sent over today, the five foot overdig, the center of that tree is only five, about five, five and a half feet from the overdig. So that critical root zone is, is going to be fairly, is going to be severely impacted. Will the tree last a year, two years, maybe, but eventually at some point, that tree in, in the not so distant future will, you know, will die. Also, on that site plan shows utilities coming in on that side, basically running parallel to the shared driveway. Again, the excavation there, water sewer, the Pepco line as well, all coming in there. Again, excavation right along the line of that critical root, root zone. In addition to that, there'll be the main construction access to the front yard so that we can stage materials, equipment, et cetera, will be coming right in through where that tree is. And the reason is because it's a shared driveway and the house actually sits up a little bit on a hill, so the, and you'd have to, we'd have to cut a ton of dirt and it just would cause a huge mess, which is unnecessary. And because we have exclusive use of the shared driveway from a past agreement made with the current owner of forty four twenty two Walsh and the neighbor, we, we don't have any access issues with the, with the shared driveway. So then that access will basically come in right along that tree. So trucks, roof trusses, material drop offs, again impacting that critical root zone. In exchange for the loss of the canopy for the town, I propose planting two, one and a half to two inch caliber black gum trees or two, two blows in the front of the property, along the prop, on our side of the property line, obviously. Those are marked on that CAS engineering site plan from today. In addition to that, I would like to plant two more of the identical trees, one and a half inch to two inch caliber two blows in the rear of the property. Those are not currently marked on the site plan. The reason being, we'll have to coordinate that with the stormwater management plan, so I don't want to drop an X on it and have it not be in the right place, but that is still very much our plan, but location is TBD. That's all I have.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you, I apologize.
Thank you for, for presenting this.
Sure.
The, in terms of the planning, what, I'm just curious, what caused you to choose this particular variety of canopy tree?
Past experience when talking to other builders and developers who have, who have come before you all, that there had been success and that the council liked black tubo. I also spoke with a landscape designer and got her opinion on, on what would be a, a good canopy tree that's also approved by the town.
And how fast do they grow?
I don't have the like exact scientific answer for that at this second.
You have any idea, just roughly?
Blackos are not fast growing, but they have nice shape, nice red fall color.
For a year, something like that? And the last question, which I discussed a bit with Dave, but I want to make sure my colleagues all hear it. I, I had just presumed that the two trees that would be planted, they're suggesting to be planted in the front would be at the top of the slope, it's quite a steep slope. If you go over and look at it. And it's like, but it looks like on these plans that you're envisioning, you're envisioning actually planting those two trees on the slope itself. And I'm wondering if you could speak to why you would put them on the slope rather than at the, on the, on the lawn at the top of the slope.
I was thinking that aesthetically, them being along the street would just be, just provide a nicer kind of look, tree line drive type of scenario for Wall Street versus it being regressed back into the, into the property.
Is there any issue about the tree life, stability of the tree being planted on a steep slope?
The roots will, you know, grow in the ground and provide the stability, so slope itself doesn't make the tree unstable or more likely to fail.
Okay, you don't have to carve out the, behind the trees, sometimes we see in landscaping to keep a level area right where the trunk is.
No, you have to dig a hole and then, you know, landscape, you know, escape the, the dirt, but you know, certainly we plant plenty of trees on very steep slopes as part of our many places programs and that's.
Okay. Those are my questions.
Okay. Thank you. I have, I have a question. How tall is the, is the, is the birch? I saw circumference, but about how tall is it?
About twenty five feet.
Thank you. Yeah. George, do you have any questions? Rich, do you have any questions? Okay. Great, thank you. I'll give an opportunity to the public if they would like to make any comments.
Good evening, I'm Martin Gold, I live directly next door at forty four twenty Wall Street. I have absolutely no objection, my wife and I, to this tree being taken down and the replacements proposed be planted in their place. I think it'll be a wonderful addition to the block. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you, very helpful.
Anyone else would like to make a comment? I see a mark online, I just want to give an opportunity in case there are any comments. Okay, great. Any other additional comments to make at this time? So I guess we can discuss the thoughts about this variance, if anyone has any thoughts they'd like to open with. No? No, no comments?
I'm in favor of granting the variance, I think the loss of this particular tree is not that high, it's not a full canopy tree. Planning to new, lovely canopy trees is great, I think we want to be assured that I guess I have been assured, even though they're going to be on the slope, that they will do well. And I, I can understand the issue that wanting to build a house there, that that the, trying to keep that birch tree would be probably very difficult to do under any circumstance.
Thank you.
Joy, do you have any? So, um, at first I was quite, you know, a lot of trees are being taken down as a result of this construction that were considered to be in good condition, although they weren't protected status, if you will. So I very much appreciate the offer to put two additional black gum trees in the back of the property and would suggest that that be a condition for, for, if, if this were to be granted, if this variance were to be granted. So that helps me because there are obviously many instances that we're, we hear about that trees are taken down, but they're not necessarily all replaced, you know, at a one for one pace. So I really do appreciate that you're open to that, so. Anything else? Okay, I'm, I'm happy to entertain a motion.
Make motion. We're also here to make a motion to approve this variance request with the condition that there be four trees. And I believe it may be standard procedure, but the other one I'd like to make sure of is that the tree is not cut down until you start construction. And that's just a legacy of a circumstance, goes back to the first year that I was on this council, that I approved a tree coming down. Beautiful pin oak tree and then nothing happened for six years. So I'm sure that's not your intent.
I promised to not let that happen.
You see the condition, that's the reason why that condition is there.
Right.
Yeah, second.
Second, all those in favor? Aye, aye. It is unanimous.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. The next public hearing is an ordinance to amend chapter four of our municipal regulations related to overgrown vegetation management. As the town manager talked about earlier this evening during his report, there has, there, there's a wide variety of understanding of what sidewalk clearance means as, as one traverses the town. And the council looked at in a, in a previous meeting, updating its policy to conform to the ADA standard, which is something that's much more recognizable and takes into account that there are different street, sorry, sidewalk widths, depending on what street one might live on or, or be walking on. So this ordinance in particular relates to ensuring everything lines up. So the policy and the ordinance and all enforcement procedures line up. I'm happy to hear any public comments on this. And Mark, I'll open it up to Mark who's online, make sure, I don't know who Mark is, he's going to talk at some point. Okay, public commentary is closed, I am happy to open it up for discussion with my colleagues.
We've had a lot of discussion about it already. And I, I read, read through the ordinance again to make sure that we were clear about our, you know, our desires and it looks like it's, it meets our requirements, so. It's my comment.
Thank you, Rich. Okay, happy to entertain a motion for this.
I moved, we approved the ordinance.
Second. Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it passes unanimously. So communication about this will start occurring pretty quickly, I imagine, thank you. And.
I just, I encourage the communication to be combined with the standard operating procedures so that people do understand that we haven't just opened up the, to, to the regulations, but actually are putting more of the objective requirements into the procedures, so that people understand that it's.
ADA means the same thing throughout the town.
What it, what it.
Exactly. Excellent, thank you. So we'll now move on to other business. The first item for discussion is the County Attainable Housing Strategies Initiative. Many of you either online or listening later or in the room might have heard about this proposal that's been put forth by the county planning.
Really? Really?
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt, I think we skipped a section of the agenda.
The discussions.
Oh, I'm so sorry, I did.
I thought you moved the agenda around.
I, I, I truly, I'm so sorry. Thank you for pointing that out.
Great time management, though.
I don't know what happened, yeah, because I was, my apologies, we're talking about Bethesda Market Park. You know what it was, I think I was taking advantage, because I don't know how long this audience is going to be here for, and I wanted to take the advantage of time to, about the attainable housing strategies initiative, that's, that was my fault, so my apologies there.
You can move agenda around if you wish.
No problem, so Bethesda Market Park, Barney, when you get a chance.
There's not too much to say at this time, first of all, this is the first formal meeting we've had since the extraordinary meeting in July when we approved the additional $3 million and thank you very much for having that, that being unanimous vote. And I think that has, was very well received by the county, of course, by the Parks Department and has freed up completely the design of the park to include the various amenities that residents have been so eager to see. And it's, it's led to, it's a very good collaboration among, between the town and the Parks Department in terms of further comments on the budget. And I shared with all of you the comments that I passed back to the Parks Department. All those have now been put into a letter which was sent to the landscape architects today. So I think we've raised a number of issues that we all know have to be resolved but need to be resolved in the context of the further planning that'll be taken up this fall as they work towards, towards site plan. The major stumbling block in terms of further progress remains the need for the county department of transportation and the developers to come to their agreement in regard. in regard to a purchase and sale agreement for the for the lot itself. And as you may recall, the real stumbling block was how the payments during the design period would be handled and how much the county would put forth to compensate the developers for the portion of the garage, which is going to be owned by the county and 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 having that happen starting immediately, really. And this is something the developers wanted to see memorialized before they released all their resources for the push for the planning required to submit a site plan. So what is good, the good news is that the way forward has been found, which is that contract is going to be split into two. There is going to be a standalone design contract and and a Department of Transportation committee has just approved that that'll be done on a sole source, non-competitive bid basis. So EYA and Bernstein and their 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 people will do the design work. And that's, of course, the only practical way you could go forward since they're going to be doing all the work afterwards anyway. But there had to be a process to approve that as a non-competitive bid process. And that committee held its meeting last week and they approved that way forward. So that will be done. And now they're drafting an agreement that memorializes the the county's payment for on an ongoing basis, the design work for the garage. There will then be a separate agreement, a purchase and sale agreement, which will memorialize the transfer of that parking lot real estate to the developers for the purpose of building the building and the full part, pardon me, the full garage with a view that once everything is complete, the public part of it gets transferred back to the county as a condominium of interest. So all that is, and that agreement actually now becomes quite simple if it does not have to involve itself with with the predicate part of the design work. So in any event, that's now the path forward and the developers are pressing to get language back from the county on both of those agreement, a markup on both those agreements. It still goes more slowly than neighbors would like, and that's always very frustrating. But that is the level of progress. I think frankly, we're probably looking at I don't, I'd be very happy if it were this month, but I wouldn't be surprised if it's not till next month before that agree, those agreements are set. At at that point, the developers will really release the resources to do the design work for the for the site plan. And that's when we will be re-engaging work on the design of the park as well. So that's where we are.
Any question? Okay, we'll now go into discussions about the aforementioned Meadow Lane Valley Place intersection improvements. So happy to have discussions. Any questions, any thoughts that came up and kind of next steps?
Yeah, I I don't have any anything substantive to say. I've heard a lot of information that we didn't have. And there's no urgency for us to to do this tonight. So my my feeling is given the additional information, we send it back to the Public Service Committee and let them reevaluate their their submitted and see what see what they say about it.
What was the impetus for it? Was it the school?
Yeah, the school submit, the school asked for it. And so the Public Services Committee, Howard's not here, unfortunately. But but I, again, there's no reason for us to have to act on this tonight. We can send it back to him for further review.
So do you know if the school asked for it in that particular spot or they just wanted to?
Yeah, they wanted, they wanted a crossing from, yeah.
In that spot?
Yeah, across that area there. Yes.
So it was actually in combination with, if you've walked that area, there's some curb cuts that are set up for ADA access. And our traffic engineer, Joe Cootrow, came up with an initial plan, which was alluded to earlier tonight, where a crosswalk would be put connecting that tip where that playground or the gate, you know, now closed gate across to the island and then connecting there across Valley Place. So it would be matched up. So that's what was put forth in front of the Public Services Committee and you know, just lots of discussions about the, when when these discussions occurred, it was during the school year, last school year. So, you know, who knows from year to year, the student, students and where they're coming from.
I think certainly I generally agree that there's no reason for us to enough to information for things for us to think about that I'm certainly not ready to propose or to think we should go forward with a request for a public hearing. I guess the the general thought I have is I'm just reflecting on this and I spent a lot of time walking around the area and a lot of the other neighboring areas. One thing should be, a couple of things should be said, I guess, as a matter of principle. One is actually most of the intersections in town do have crosswalks. In fact, a lot of them have four crosswalks. That's, that's what we typically do. And we do it for the obvious reasons of encouraging people to walk in certain places and not others and more safety. So this is an anomaly not to have a crosswalk. And secondly, and again, I think this, I don't say this in any sense, don't take this wrong, especially for the Hunts and the others. But obviously, we have a fiduciary responsibility for the whole town. And as much as we understand that it might, something might be inconvenient for one homeowner, if we believe there was an important issue of safety, we'd have to take that into account and give that much greater weight than the issue of a parking space for a homeowner. We would, at least that's my view. We would have to, we'd have to act that way. We would not be we would not be carrying forth our responsibilities the way we must. So I think in my mind, the question really does come down to whether or not this represents an improvement in safety or not. And I think we've heard tonight some concerns as to why it might not lead to an improvement in safety. And I'm very willing to entertain those. And and I guess also, and I, I think the key point is that people from the the north, the northeast quadrant of town that want their kids to get there would more likely and find it safer to cross at at the Sycamore, the crosswalk there and stay on the on that sidewalk. And I walked that today and I was actually, I had been a little bit worried about the the width of that sidewalk, especially at the wall. But the way it's structured is that the sidewalk actually expands and is five feet there. So it's quite a wide sidewalk at that wall. I was afraid that perhaps that was quite narrow and there'd be a question of people not feeling comfortable and perhaps not using as much, but I'm not sure there's any real issue there. And then I presumed that most of them do take the the crosswalk at the elbow, I'll call it, where Valley Place, I'm sorry, where Beachwood turns into Valley Place at that elbow, the right angle turn to get into the back of the school that way. So I guess my instinct is, and I I'm now this year the liaison to the Public Services Committee. So the council wishes to have it go back to the committee. We can do that. But I think this is one of those issues where you know, trying to weigh it all, I would welcome hearing more from other residents. In other words, is there any feeling out there generally of families that would like to see their children walk in a different way in going to or from this elementary school or not, you know? And if the answer is that we don't hear very much, well, that tells us something. If on the other hand, twenty or thirty parents showed up saying, wait a minute, we actually felt not very happy about the way kids have to go to school now, we'd prefer a different route, then that's something we'd have to listen to. But I I'm not sure that we've been able to get that kind of potential commentary. Maybe we won't. So maybe people just won't care. They think the current route is fine, which I think would then maybe a fairly important consideration. So if the council wants, I'm happy to have the council, the committee consider it. But I think the view I would have and I would convey with your permission to the committee is that the job is to find out if there are other parents with small kids who feel concerned about this intersection and are looking for a, what to them would be a safer, better way for their kids to get to school or not. And that's what I think would be useful input.
I I wouldn't limit it to just the needs of the schoolchildren, too. Many residents walk those areas as well. So I would, I I'd put it out in a more general sense. I yeah, I just don't see the need that we need to do anything right now. We need to have them look at that further. And like Barney said, there there may be, in addition to the children, there are many adults who walk that regularly too. So let's let's find out.
So I will say, because I was liaison to PSC while all this was going on. Certainly, the the area neighbors were informed about these discussions, not at a, at a townwide level, which is what what I think you're you're more referring to. But unless there's something to react to, it's very difficult to just get general commentary, you know, on things. So if that is the will of the council to kind of either through Joe Cootrow or, you know, something to take another look at this and do a another type of count study as to the the current usage, you know what I mean? That's something that I think the the town could do in terms of what does, what does the usage look like this point in time, you know? And that takes into account, as much as the study that you you did, just to have it a little bit more maybe over a longer period of time or something like that, if that's the will of the council, to then come up with what would, if any, alternative be? Because I I personally don't know if there would be another alternative, except what was eventually noted. So yeah, just wanted to make those comments there. Unless people have something to react to, it's very difficult to elicit comments. So what I got. So what are, what are your thoughts? PSC to look at it again. I'm not sure about the this was discussed for many months. So again, I would say I think more data would be needed for the PSC to to react to.
And and about data collection. Again, I think there are many town residents that use those, that area to walk. And so doing a survey just during the school hour is not sufficient if we're going to look at, see what the interest is. So whatever the PSC can do to to take a look at it in its totality, I think it would be worthwhile.
Okay. Any other? So what you guys are generally in agreement to put it back to the PSC? Okay. Okay, that's what. All right. Thank you, sir. Taking that on. I see. And you're not going to stay for attainable housing strategies, which is, which is actually, look, this is actually really affecting all of your lots. Okay? I really want you guys to say, I I don't mean to to kind of point fingers here, but you're within five hundred feet, your lots are within five hundred feet of Connecticut Avenue and as such are subject to tremendous changes. So please stay for an extra fifteen minutes so that we can just discuss it. I'd really appreciate it. And you might be like super happy that this is happening and that's good for us to know as well. I don't mean to insinuate anything other than that. So the next thing is is a bit of more of a pro forma thing. Todd, I'll have you read through. I think it's every four or five years we opt into the County Hazard Mitigation Plan, just as a matter of course. And so it's come up again. It was oh, we don't want to be on camera.
That, that
So whatever's on. Whatever it is that we're looking at in front of us. Stranger change. Yeah. It's just those. It's those gremlins. So what we have is a resolution. Again, it's, is it every four years or five years?
Every eight years.
Eight years. I'm so sorry, eight years. Yeah, it's the first time I've seen it. And pretty short that, as mentioned, just to make sure that we're a part of the Hazard Mitigation Plan. If there's any discussion points, questions about this. Again, kind of pro forma.
What happens if we don't?
We're not eligible for FEMA assistance for for
That's what I thought. I mean, there's, there's some significant repercussions if we don't.
Yeah, yeah, we have to either develop our own plan or we or we tag on to the county's plan, but we have to do one or the other to be eligible for FEMA assistance. So obviously, we 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 ride the county's plan.
So both our hands tied behind our back. We still have to vote.
Right, right.
With that, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Now, we're going to go into the Attainable Housing Strategies Initiative. So a a number of years ago, the Thrive Montgomery 2050 Plan was passed by the County Council. Essentially, the plan is all about making sure that the county becomes more urbanized. It's just a plan and now come in the actual start of the recommendations to make neighborhoods more dense than exist today. We are a municipality and we have a building authority that's derived by, you know, the state provides us that authority, but we do not have zoning authority. We we cannot say how land can be used. That is under the purview of the County Council. So if the County Council passes something, for example, a couple of years ago, the ability to build accessory dwelling units, whether it's attached, meaning in your basement, or detached, that you convert your garage space or something. Once the County Council passed that, we had to come up with ways to implement that. We can't say, no, we're not going to, you know, we're not going to accommodate ADUs. The County Council presently has recommendations whereby for the town, I'm just going to speak specific to the town because it's different in different parts of the county. Each lot, and where our lots are approximately 6,000 square feet, each lot would be allowed to, for, for if a house was knocked down, a developer could build a duplex, a triplex and a quadplex by right, meaning you would have no way to object to its being built. And if you're within five, if your lot is within 500 feet of Connecticut Avenue and 500 feet of, or 500 feet from Wisconsin Avenue, there's about 12, 13 lots that are impacted with that, you're allowed on that lot to build apartment buildings up to nineteen units, townhouses and stacked flats. So just want to make sure that you're all aware that this is what is under consideration by the County Council today. We've solicited many comments from our residents, kind of runs the spectrum. Some people are wanting for the for the town to stay as a single family neighborhood where others are welcome these recommendations. It's not affordable housing at all. And if any of you have been keeping track of the development that is not on a town lot, but it's at the corner of Walsh and West, thank you, where a, a a lot next to, it's like a couple of lots down from the Ryder Center that had a small home rental that was sold to a developer. Now it's three townhouses, each going for $3.6 million. So that's
Yeah, and if we could mention that the lot was purchased for about 1.6 million.
I didn't know that.
Yes.
Figure. Thank you.
And now whoever is selling three units for 3.6 a piece.
That's if they sell for that.
If they sell for that.
That's the current, that's what, it just got on for listed for sale a couple, like a week and a half, two weeks ago. So I'm not sitting here, we are not sitting here as a town council saying that this is like terrible, awful, but it up. What we are focused on is maintaining our municipal regulatory authority, which becomes very, very complicated because of the fact that everything is derived from the state and the state authority that we presently have is tied to single family homes. It says single family residential, so we're trying to get that changed. In addition, we are working with the county to further clarify what these rules and regulations and all this, what would this mean for different communities that are concerned about infrastructure, concerned about parking, concerned about school and, and traffic impact. On the 25th of September, I encourage all of you to attend an in-person session that will be, listening session that will be held or hosted by the council president, Andrew Fritzen. It will be at the Bethesda Chevy Chase Regional Services Center on Edgemore. It's been listed in forecast. It's going to be always, it's in the town crier. So please keep track of that and please attend this session to hear more. And what, it's, it's what I heard today, earlier today, is that because they're holding these listening sessions throughout the county. And by far, the Bethesda Chevy Chase Listening Session is well oversubscribed in terms of registration. So you do need to register to let them know, to hear what your neighbors, what other municipalities think about this. And I think it's, it's extremely important that you are well aware of what might be changing. We heard as well today that the council will be considering these, to introduce legislation after these listening sessions. So that could be as early as next month. Okay.
Do we know who's going to write the?
We do not. But the council president Fritzen today noted a couple of times that after the listening sessions. When after?
And is it first going to go through his committee?
He was very, very vague as to what the process would exactly be. So we as well have been having meetings with our, with other area municipalities so that we can exchange information and lessons learned. We are, for example, working on a, a, a letter to send to our state legislators to clarify that no matter the type of residence in the municipality, we would still have authority to regulate setbacks and height and, and drainage and trees and all of that. And it doesn't change if it's a multifamily home versus a single family home. If you're unable to make September 25th, for whatever reason, it's an in-person meeting, the, the virtual session will be on October the 2nd. That's, excuse me, 7:00 PM? It's in the forecast. Yeah. Yeah. It's a woo-foo link, but we've provided all that information. If you're physically looking at the forecast, we have a bitly link that'll take you to, to all of that. And absolutely you can send emails. I would, I would suggest that it be individually to each council member, your thoughts. Of course you can. Not in this month's forecast, but we do, and we can set it up again in the town crier as well. So it's an automatic to the individual. Yeah. There's, there's like a general email address that says like all county council, but no one ever reads those. And, and if you have any specific questions, because the truth is I can talk about this all day long. It's very complicated, but we, we have been aware of all the different nuances with this. We've asked many clarifying questions and we have a seat at the table in terms of the, the county does pick up our, the, the phone when we call and answer our emails. So we're, we're, we're having a good relationship with them. However, we, we want to make sure that we're accurately representing how the residents feel about this. So it, it could be a very drastic change and it, and the, the county has said it would result in probably 200, 200 projects like these across the county per year. I'm not sure how they come up with that. We, just for reference, in the town, there are five tear downs a year. Because we have to sign the permit, I sign the permits for them. So it's about five a year. Which gives you a sense. We have 1,036 homes. That's all my update. Not too much there where things are continuing. We're having a, a, a session with the county legal representatives on Monday and then another, you know, further discussions going on with other municipalities.
Thank you very much. And again, thank you for your, your leadership on this because you've really been the person to pull together the other municipalities to support the clarification and our authority that's required from the state. And we know that only by having all the other municipalities deeply engaged and signing on, will we have a chance to do that? So thank you for that. I just wanted to add one thing that Steph and I had the opportunity to speak to Fritzen at a fundraiser on Sunday and Saturday. And the point that we made, and which I suggested something we want to emphasize and ask other municipalities to emphasize, is to connect the dots between the zoning text amendment that they want to take, the county wants to take up and the need for clarification of our authority. The point we made to Fritzen, because he was being talked about, well, what's the compromise? You know, the bookend positions are nothing, which something's going to happen.
Nothing's not an option.
Right. Not the option, but on the other hand, the planning board may have gone too far and blah, 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 blah. But we said, it's not inside that box. You have to connect it to the clarification of our authority. And if we do not get that clarification of authority, so that our setbacks can cover any housing, not just single family housing, if we don't get that, you're going to have implacable opposition to anything. So if you want compromise, the genesis or the basis of that compromise has to be the clarification of the town's authority. So we made that point very strongly. He claimed he understood it. He's having conversations. But clearly it's, I think we want to make sure that to bolster the confidence of our delegates and our state senator to push for this. It's important that Montgomery County indicate their support. So trying to make sure that Fritzen and others who might be willing to want to walk down this path, understand the role they have to play to secure that county support for this clarification. That's all part of it. So just to me, it's just, we want to make sure that we don't let county officials off the hook thinking that, well, gee, we can just focus on the ZTA. And, and it's up to the state to decide what they're going to do for clarification. No, that's not the deal. The deal is the clarification is married to the issue of any ZTA.
Yeah. Excellent. Appreciate that. Well, speaking of the technical amendment, that's the, the next agenda item. If I could be permitted to, to move on to that. So as I mentioned earlier, our regulatory authority ties to particular Maryland code article, section dash 20, 20 dash 509 of the Regional District Act. And it's a one paragraph, like just statement that, that effectively says that we're able to regulate fencing and, and signage and parking and heights and massing and things like that for single family homes. So we have been talking with our state legislators to put, to, to get them to a point that there could be a, a bill introduced during the next, the 2025 legislative session that strikes the term, single family, just has it all residential. So no matter the type of, of, of development we're talking about, that we still retain our authority. However, and this is just how the sausage gets made every once in a while. The only way that the state legislators will accept the idea of introducing this technical amendment is if the municipalities promise not to pass ordinances that would be more restrictive for multifamily properties than they would be for a single family. So if you think about it, a, a building window, right, that is a certain height and, and certain mass on, on a lot and certain setbacks. We couldn't, according to this little promise, pass a, like pass an ordinance as well. If it's a multifamily property, the setback is X, but if it's a single family property, the setback is Y. We can't do that and, and get this clarification passed. So I'm asking my colleagues here, so that the suggests it's kind of gone back and forth, but I think we're finally hit on, on, on some wording where in addition to striking single family, we're adding a clause that says that, and this goes off to regulate the construction, repair, remodeling of residential houses, buildings or other structures on land zone for residential use as it relates to all the stuff that I said. And must be adopted and applied without regard to the type of use of the building, except that regulations that apply to buildings with more than one residence may be less restrictive. So this might sound a little odd to say, well, wait a second, why are we saying if you can't ipso facto, if you can't do it more? Of course you can do. They, the state legislators again, wanted to see that if there was a municipality out there that wanted to loosen regulations for multifamily developments to allow there, more of them to proliferate, then knock yourselves out. This isn't the direction necessarily that the town is thinking about, but there, there might be other municipalities that will want to pass more lax regulations. So in order again, for the state, our state legislators to, to kind of back this, they wanted to have some assurances that, that the regulations would apply uniformly. And if there are those that wanted to be a little bit more lax for multifamily, then, then that, that would be great. So that's the way we're threading the needle here. And what I wanted to just confirm with you all is whether you're good to sign on to this letter. So I'm happy to.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank goodness.
Thank you. Yeah.
Well, we now becomes the fun part because every, we're, we're waiting on all these other municipalities to, to agree to this. So half of them are totally fine. One, I'm not sure what's going to happen and the others will, will just need some gentle.
I did notice in your, in your letter that you had Martin's Edition wasn't in it. And I. Were they in it?
Yeah. Yeah. Sorry. I'm looking, trying to find.
They are. Okay. I missed that. Couldn't.
Look at it. Make sure. Yep. It's second to last. Yeah. They like to call themselves VMA. They're on board. They're, they're, they're on board. There's one that may be a little tougher to nail down and it's an important one, but the rest I think will, will be okay with this. And have appreciated that we're trying to work together and get this done. County growth and infrastructure policy. So many of the discussions that have come up in tandem with attainable housing is what about schools? What about traffic? Like it's just going to be really, really tough. This is where the county growth and infrastructure policy comes in. So separate, separate initiative altogether. And they look at this every four years. They look at this policy to say for areas, you know, what should we do to, to impact? Or, or better take into account the impact of schools and transportation or, or traffic in areas. And what should we charge developers in the form of impact taxes when they build a development? So I'll cut to the chase and say that from a transportation perspective, Bethesda is considered a red policy zone. And what that means is they don't care how much vehicular traffic there is. It's about pedestrian safety, bicyclist safety, public transportation access and use. If you're waiting for 20 minutes at a couple of lights on Wisconsin, it doesn't impact them. So it's not something that's measured to be improved, put it that way. For schools, they rely heavily on Montgomery County Public Schools to tell them just kind of how many kids are coming into their different classes to determine whether or not a school is over capacity. So right now, for example, Bethesda Elementary School is a little bit over capacity, but Somerset is fine. The Chevy Chase Elementary School is fine and Bethesda Chevy Chase High School is fine. You know, it's working within its, its limits. So they're not considering those classrooms to be overcrowded, even with the impact of all the, all the teachers leaving and or many teachers leaving and school, individual classes just being bigger. What was interesting is that the, the, the growth infrastructure policy public hearing was yesterday. So I had a chance to listen to that. There weren't that many people who's, who actually provide maybe written testimony, but the only folks that I heard were the ones that were, you know, testifying verbally. And either people were really upset as to the lowering of impact taxes, which means that, oh, developers don't have to pay as much taxes when they put up a multifamily property or building or, you know, whatever. But then that means there's less money for schools, right? So people were really concerned about how the budget was going to actually pan out, knowing that it's extremely expensive to ensure that you have adequate public infrastructure and public amenities. And if you're lowering impact taxes, how's that all going to work out? Or the other side, which were lawyers representing developers and they were like, this is fantastic. We really love the exemptions that you've put together. This is, we firmly believe this is the best thing that has come along. So it's a very, why, there was no middle. There was very few recommendations or suggestions. So I don't know what is going to happen with that, but by law, the county council has to figure out the growth infrastructure, either to approve it or whatever. By November 15th of this year, by law, it has to happen. The impact tax question can wait apparently until later, but that's my only update for that. So feel free to ask these questions if you plan to go on September the 25th to council president Fritzen, as to like how all this fits together. If, or you can, we can talk about it later. The Bethesda Minor Master Plan Amendment. That's a beauty as well. So you're all very familiar just how much construction has, has occurred in Bethesda, downtown Bethesda in the last seven years. When the downtown master plan, is that? Bethesda downtown plan was passed. It was supposed to be like a 20-year plan and saying, you know, tens of millions of square feet of additional, of development could be, could be accommodated in Bethesda. And to, I think many people's surprise, many people at the county's surprise, whatever had been set aside, which was 32 and a half million square feet, actually has been bought up in seven years. So what was this 20-year plan? That's why you see all of this lovely construction. Seems like every week there's a new building coming up, right? So the county initially came and this was last fall, I think, they, they came in and said, you know what? We're doing such a great job figuring out what's going on with Bethesda downtown plan. We want to eliminate the prospect of a cap. Just keep building. And of course, the neighborhood communities got really upset because it was, it was based on math, a mathematical formula to say, this is what Bethesda can accommodate. Meanwhile, no parks have been delivered. There's no recreational center. We don't have Bus Rapid Transit on, on Wisconsin, but yet you want us, you want to eliminate the prospect of, of having a building cap, right? More skyscrapers. That's what they're looking for. So they initially, as I mentioned, said, we want to eliminate it. We fought that. They slowed it down and said, okay, let's work with the communities to figure out what's the right number. The number that they have come up with is basically, eh, you know, it's been about a million square feet a year of development. Let's just keep it at a million per, because we don't really want to touch this again until the end of the 20-year period that the original plan was set up for. So those are the calculations that they're working with to say, yeah, about a million square feet a year, we can approve and get going. And not that you're capped at a year, but ultimately over the next 15 years, 15 more, 20 more million square feet. So that's what they're thinking about right now. That is also, it, so you have attainable housing. We have the growth infrastructure policy and we have the Bethesda overlay zone, all happening at the same time. And very much the county wants to pass this and make sure that everyone's going to have their marching orders. Developers need to know whether or not they can put in all the money that it takes to put a site plan together and still have that. put in all the money that it takes to put a site plan together and still have that, I guess, additional square feet available to them for their development. There's a what's called a park impact payment, meaning if you if your lot is only allowed to be built here, but you want to build to this height, you can pay for the difference using a park impact payment. But it's at a super low rate of $15 per square foot. It's a giveaway. And and so we were asking, raise the rate. Obviously, this is a very sought out area. They're not sure that they want to do that. They want to, you know, encourage more development. So the Minor Master Plan Amendment is is has been released, if you will, on the 19th, where there's our first opportunity to put in some written testimony, not verbal, but written testimony. I I submitted to you all yesterday some high-level talking points that could be converted into written testimony. And I, what I'd like to do is just go through them and then understand if you want me to include this or not, so I can put together a draft and send it all to, send it out to you all to to edit accordingly. So the first item is that the limit that has been thrown out there, which is basically not a limit, is a continuation of the past. So there this, there hasn't been an analysis that says, here's the lots that are left over in Bethesda. Here's what's allowable to be built on that lot. Let's like add up all those lots and see what we actually do have left in terms of current capacity. There was no analysis. It's just basically, again, 1 million square feet a year. Let's just continue with that 1 million number. Not real much thought. So wanted to stop there and just ask what you all think about including those comments.
Thanks for that overview, Irene. And I I think by and large, these are very helpful structured points that to to put into testimony. My general comment is, I think you're absolutely right that the the additional analysis of just how much more could be built and where it could be built is something we all need to have. And it's and it's and we had asked for that at the last discussion that we had with the advisory committee and the planning board represented, Planning Department Representative Elsie McCoy didn't know the number, which really astonished all of us. But that being said, I would actually suggest as a tone, a little bit harder hitting. The the amount of additional density that was permitted under the Bethesda Downtown Plan was just over 8 million square feet. Their minimum recommendation for this is 11 million square feet. This is not a minor master plan adjustment. This is a major master plan adjustment. And I think that point has to be made really clearly upfront, that they're advocating something which is materially more than what we had carefully negotiated and worked through seven years ago. And and so that that far from this being any kind of cap, as you said, this just means we're we're just going to put a number out there that's so high that effectively there is an A cap. And that's not the spirit of that's responsive to your testimony that you gave when when we discussed this before. So I think that to me is a high-level point, that this notion that there's a, just putting in a new cap is nonsense. This is an enormous increase. And then the the analysis is key, but almost to me, it's almost a separate point. So I want to leave that with you to think, think about it. Putting pen to paper there on that point.
Do we go into the infrastructure, which is some other points like? I don't think anyone knows what the what our current capacity is in terms of water and sewer electricity.
And I and I think that, for me, that's the whole, the key point of this whole thing, which is the this, the last bullet on that, which is the additional density isn't tied to achieving goals such as new parks, recreation center, transit improvement. I mean, what what they're saying is we're going to go ahead with increasing density and forget about infrastructure.
Yeah.
And that's just nuts.
We had this discussion with the with the advisory committee. I asked Elsie, the client, I said, wait a minute here. You know, there is a careful balanced plan of so much additional green space, very little of which has been realized. The Bethesda Market Park will probably be.
Which they didn't pay, which they're only paying a portion of. We're paying.
We're paying for a lot of it, and which Parks Department did not advocate for. We advocate.
Right, right.
And and but the idea was at the end that there was balance, that you actually had this amount of density, this amount of green space, that makes sense. So I asked them, well, how much more green space are you talking about if you want to add another 11 million feet? Immediately, it was like, well, well, no, we never meant to imply that 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 there wouldn't that
They'd have more parks.
There would be more green space, but we were just saying this is all we would ever, you know, essentially saying this is all we were ever really pledging to do, no matter how much additional.
Well, I would even go further and say, hey, you're never going to get those parks unless we have the additional development.
That was implicit. Yes, that's right. So I think your your point, you know, the fact that they're not outlining any further urban green space with this amount of additional density that is greater than the amount that was approved seven years ago is really striking.
Okay. Um, yeah, that kind of goes into a little bit more into that second main point on sacrificing infrastructure and amenities in the in favor of this density. The third, let me make sure that looking at this, the cost of purchasing, like the PIP cost should be increased.
Well, that's how you anticipate paying for the new.
Parks.
Yeah, right. So if you don't increase it
Yeah.
and you're increasing the density, you're never, we're never going to get the.
We're never going to get there. No.
Yeah, it just, it's nonsensical almost. So.
Do you want me to talk about the public benefit point system as well? That's another aspect of of.
I have to even for my, I didn't fully grasp that.
So when, just like with Corso or or Bethesda Market Park, you put a green roof, you get a couple of points you can do. So previous to this, it would be just a allocation of of these different points, but now the county wants to create a tier system where some amenities mean more than others and according to the county. So therefore, if 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 a developer goes for like a tier one, they only have to do one tier one, and they don't have to ever touch any of the others. And and that could mean that a lot of supposed two tier two or tier three items will never get done. So because they're going to get the biggest bang for their buck in terms of the points if they go after tier one. But I think there's a general, at least on the Land Use Committee, there's there's a bit of a like, some of the tier one items, are they really that much more important? It's not necessarily to the neighborhoods. So.
Okay. Yeah, and those, I I think that in the point system is their their contributions to those things. So it would be in their building envelopes, and that's where they're adding these these amenities, right? I'm assuming that's what the point to say if if he says, we're going to put a green roof on our facility. Right? That's there. That's theirs. They're not putting anything into the community. They're putting it in.
As an example, there are other more community, but yes, exactly.
So, you know, we're, our focus is on if they're going to do things, then there should be an another benefit to the community.
Public good.
There should be a public.
We're going to give them public. It should be a public day.
Good, right.
Okay. Okay. And the third item is tying there, there was an, there is an attempt to tie the growth and infrastructure policy to affordable housing, which was never, again, you go to this point about Minor Master Plan Amendment. Affordable housing was never part of the Bethesda Downtown Plan, other than the MPD program, the county's MPD program. And is it appropriate to, you know, really open it up? It's becoming less and less mi- minor, more and more major with each idea.
Well, on that point, I think, and I want to bring this up for everyone's consideration. Downside of being on the council for so long as I actually had the chance to be involved in the work on the Bethesda Downtown Plan. There was the part that's in that's in Irene's section on this, which was most concerning to me was this the height incentive area. And here was the, here was the situation. A whole lot of the communities really got together under C bar and worked very solidly together to say, look, we understand you want to raise the allowed height, not the density, but the allowed height for all these properties throughout the downtown plan, including properties that are adjacent to our communities. And we're all amateurs. We're all, none of us are professionals. And this is an incredibly complicated code. And the most dangerous word in the English language is notwithstanding. In this code, there are many, many examples of notwithstanding anything else said in this code elsewhere. You, Mr. Developer, can get additional height if you do X, Y, or Z. And that additional height supersedes whatever the Y is, the boundary for the height that is actually mapped to the site. So he said, we can't crap with all this. We're in the midst of negotiating with all of you on how much additional height is appropriate on 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 for for new building in our area. And the 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 real focal point at the time is what we call the Jaffe property right next to the church, includes Bray and Scarf and that area. And, you know, the the, they originally wanted like 120 feet, and we got agreement that would be 90 feet, which is the same height as the Adagio across the street. Sounds fair. But what we wanted to, what we said was, the height is the height. In other words, we can't negotiate in good faith and expect you to be negotiating with us in good faith for a maximum height and then find out that pursuant to some other provision of the code, you can actually jack it up to 120 feet.
Right.
So what we mapped out, and Roger Berliner was then our council member, and he supported us, was essentially a donut area around the the perimeter of the downtown plan. And inside of that donut, the height was the height. Whatever was mapped was the maximum. It could not be exceeded. Inside of that, sort of the donut hole, if you will, is called the height incentive area. And that's where, if the developer wanted to have additional height because he was going to do more MPDUs or whatever, that was fine. The spirit of that was consistent with another point that we had made, which is, we want a tent, not a bowl. We want that greatest density in the middle of the area sloping down to the towns, not high rises at the edges and something lower in the middle. In fact, though, we've still ended up with some of that anyway. But nonetheless, that was the spirit. So I found McCoy's raising of the idea that this incentive area could be expanded really offensive because it violated the fundamental negotiating principle that had been agreed with the communities, not just the town, but all the communities. We had really a common, you know, from east Bethesda way down around Horn, and and which was the height would be the height, and that was the basis of it. So I think it's a point that I'd really encourage that we have strongly in our testimony that this would be a really fundamental violation of the negotiations that have been held. And that it had, and and this is to to also push against the argument that we're just being nimby's. We accepted and agreed to a vast increase in the height and density. But we did so basically with certain understandings of how it would be carved. And 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 to now just willy-nilly say you're going to want to violate that is simply not the courage.
And is the is the point that they they are they intend to violate it by citing a need for more affordable housing?
That's what he said, affordable, but affordable.
Right. What does that mean in this area?
It it the, in the original, by and large in the county, when a developer puts up more than 20 units, they have to have 12 and a half percent to be modern moderately priced dwelling units, MPDUs. In the Bethesda Downtown Plan, that was raised to a minimum of 15%. We said, great, that's fine. Happy with that. You know, that was, we're never concerned about that. And and so the the, but that was the, that there's no, there's no definition of affordable housing per se. The MPD program is very carefully defined. And if I could just say one thing relevant to our residents who have gamely stayed, the the in the zoning text amendment that Irene described, you might recall she said up to 19 units. They specifically stopped at 19 and didn't go to 20, so they would not have to have the obligation to put in any moderately priced dwelling units. Just to note that. Anyway, so I, I think I've said my piece on it. I just feel that this is a really fundamental.
Do you want me to tie it back, though, to affordable housing or just kind of push aside instead, just focus on the height incentive area?
I would, I would, my personal view, but I, those could make difference. It really is an issue of the height incentive area staying the way it is, the way it was negotiated, that this was the deal. And and that we did it in the context of permitting a vast expansion of height near our neighborhoods. And and that's the deal that has to stay in place.
And then, I guess, related to that, I I don't know, are we asking, I mean, the Long Range Planning Committee has asked for additional data. I haven't really seen, I mean, we did ask actually, you know, what was included in the plan with respect to moderately polite price dwelling units versus what has already been built in Bethesda? And I don't, perhaps you have that.
You know, I, the the final PowerPoint that will be present, I think their first public meeting was tonight, so it was just under the gun. And I saw a little blurb, but you keep talking because I'm going to try and and.
Yeah, I guess the, you know, the other point would be, you know, for us, the, you know, there's a lot of pressure from, I mean, you know, around the country, we realize there is a shortage of using housing units in a lot of places. The state has recognized that Maryland has a shortage of housing units. But I think the issue is there's a shortage in a lot of areas, but not, it's not uniform. And what I feel like is that we are, you know, there's a one-size-fits-all that's being forced upon us. And, you know, I think we have to recognize that everybody wants to be in this Bethesda area. We could say lots, it's great. So that's wonderful. They all want to be here. There are certain parts of the county where they they're trying to encourage development, but they can't. And it seems like some of these regulations might be better aimed at areas where they can't, where they're begging developers to build more. But this area is not one of those areas. We have so many problems with traffic. I mean, we could go on. I, you know, do want to thank staff for all the work that they've done on just trying to help us debug what's going on with Wisconsin Avenue, because it's it's a disaster. And so this is really just offering more to that. And so I would also reiterate what Barney said. I think we really have to you know, really question them and and demand some analysis, because this is going to have a real impact on people who are already living here.
Yep, okay. Sure. Over 400.
Guys, glad you stayed.
Okay, complex stuff. Thank you for all your hard work. I'm wondering whether there is any empirical data or even impressionistic sense of whether all of the extra office and residential space that's being built in these towering skyscrapers, primarily on Wisconsin Avenue, are actually being utilized? Or are we going to have another or a set of half-empty, three-quarters empty buildings like the one I remember that that exists now on the old McDonald's site? Which my sense is that they they struggle to fill. It's mostly, it's an office building, I believe. Because if so, and it's a little bit like the Hudson Yards issue in New York City, building all this space, but are people, are 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 individuals or companies or other organizations actually leasing the space?
Yeah, so we've asked that numerous, asked that question numerous times, and they will say for Bethesda that the occupancy rates are north of 80%. It takes two years for a building to fill up. So obviously, there's been some new ones that have come online. But that there's no problem in filling those up. There's something about that that doesn't feel right, because you could look at night at those buildings, and it doesn't seem like people live in them. But I don't know. That's what they're saying.
And the other thing is that, like, there, there is going to be a commercial real estate loan crisis any day now, basically. And then we're really going to find out where the commercial vacancies are. And just north of the metro, there are two buildings in bankruptcy. So that's, it's not downtown Bethesda. It's about three-quarters of a mile to a mile north of the metro, and it's maybe in the unfortunate pocket of real estate between the Bethesda Metro and the NIH Walter Reed Metro. But they, that's, you could shoot a cannon down those buildings and there's no one in them. So we, I, we would definitely like to see more granular data on that rather than their general assurances.
Yeah, that's what's been. Did you want to say something, Barney?
I think Steph made the point that you were talking about residential, but commercial really isn't a very serious way. And, and, uh, one of the issues we've asked them to consider is what are the prospects for potentially converting some of the commercial buildings to residential?
Which Fairfax County has been doing actually in Virginia. They, they just approved like eight hundred million units on Fairfax Parkway that were in a
Commercial.
Yeah, an abandoned commercial.
That might be something to stress in your, in the testimony as well, that, that has to be carefully assessed because that potentially. And frankly, at the end of the day, they'll say, well, that's very hard to do. Well, at the end of the day, you take those buildings down. You take those buildings down. That's what happens to them if they're unoccupied. And, and new buildings get built and the old investors have lost their money. But that's, that makes more sense to do that than to put up new stuff, leaving the other stuff unoccupied.
Okay. Any other comments that you think are?
I think you have a lot to work on.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're covering it all. I'm going to really try, this is the planning board. I'm going to try and keep it very succinct. Because.
You know, my, part of our discussions over the last few months on, on this attainable housing issue really has sidestepped the idea of, do we need more affordable housing in Bethesda? And, you know, they've, they've essentially abandoned the term affordable in all of their literature and now it's attainable. Well, what's, what will be attainable in Bethesda will continue to be high income families moving into the, into these spaces, not, not people who are middle income. And one of the things I, I was thinking about in terms of the planning process, the master plan, is we have, we do have in Bethesda's places that people can live affordably. The fields, we have a lot of off of, uh, off of Leland, those apartments in the, the, to the, on Hill, near Hillendale and all those. But, and so in, in, I mean, I can, I can see a situation where those places come down. Yeah. And these huge
Luxury.
Luxury townhouses or condos go up. And we've essentially eliminated a whole segment of the population which currently lives here. So, and it, and it struck me because I remember them saying at the beginning of all of these discussions, the, all of these things are one way to increase density. Well, there are many other ways to increase density and this gets to your point or Joy's point of if you really want to incentivize the development of affordable, attainable, I'll call it affordable housing, you need to focus on area where you can do that. You're never going to do that in Bethesda. The value of the property here and the value of the airspace is such that it's never going to be affordable. So they, they need to rethink this whole idea of where they're putting their emphasis on the, the growth and, and shift it from Bethesda to places where they can really do it. And I don't know how we say that in, in, in tying these things together. It just, we're, we're, we're pursuing. And, and as they said, this, this whole thing that they've been going through is just one way that, that you can develop more affordable, attainable housing. And why are we focused on Bethesda and building these, you know, increasing the density to the point where it is a red zone? So they don't care about the traffic. They, you know, they just don't. And, and we know without additional bus rapid transit, mass transit, you know, that these areas are still, are still going to be congested because every family will still need a car. Even if you built the best mass transit system in the world, in our urban area, mo, a lot of our people have to commute to work or that, that are outside of mass transit corridors or have to go places where they get doctor's appointments, whatever else they have to do. They're going to need a car. So we're not reducing. It's not, yeah, it is not, right.
There's cars needed in New York City.
So I know, I don't know, I don't know how we tie that train of thought together with all of this, the continuum of things that we're dealing with.
Yeah. I mean, I kind of feel like they have made their decision that they're going to go for attainable rather, really rather than affordable. And I, I might, I might assumption is that that's based on the studies that you do see them cite from time to time that more housing, regardless of type, although it is helpful if it's somewhat diverse in type, which is what they keep saying, saying in their FAQs is, you know, the semi-detached housing is a, a type that more people want. We don't have enough of. The, um, quadplexes, yeah, middle, missing middle, all of that. That's a type that we need, that we don't have enough of. And the assumption is that just increasing this, the, the supply will reduce the costs of all of the housing. And there are definitely econ, economists who think that's one hundred percent true. And I'm sure it is partly true, but they, they definitely have decided to do that. And they've kind of let the state with their incentive plans for within three quarters of a mile of a rail station and everything incentivize the affordable part of it.
My bugaboo is, um, I, from very early stages, I've said, yeah, you gotta get private equity out of the whole thing because they are buying a lot of single family homes around the country, I forget the, the county. And, um, eliminating, eliminating, like, if you're going to do this attainable housing, LLCs are one thing because people do that for tax purposes, but private equity shouldn't be allowed to purchase these, um, homes. Uh, in addition, none of them should be allowed to have short-term rentals, meaning thirty-one days or less because it takes, takes housing off the market when you do something like that.
Well, and they also need to do something about HOAs, which are very prevalent in Montgomery County.
They are very prevalent. They are, and they're exempt. Yeah. If, if they have, um, it's, it's HOA covenants are specific to like the design architectural side plus saying.
There's a lot of those.
There, I, I don't know how many there are, but, but there's a lot of HOAs. I totally agree. And, and, um, they don't want to touch the ag reserve. So it takes whole swa, and then you have Rockville and Gaithersburg that you, you can't do anything about anyway. Um, so you have whole swaths of the county that aren't, um, applicable for this.
I mean, I think, I think to tie it in to what Rich was saying, one way to tie it into the themes that we've already hit on is to say, like, here's a whole list of public goods that you are not accounting for by awarding points for all kinds of things other than items from which we all benefit. And one of those items could definitely be affordable. I mean,
Right.
Affordable housing is a public good. That could be, that could be a bullet point in there.
All right. Well, I'll do the best I can. Uh, maybe tomorrow, might be Friday. We'll see how it goes. Nineteenth is next Thursday. Hopefully we'll do. The last item on the list, and you all are well, thank you very much for staying. I really appreciate it. I hope it was helpful.
Thank you for being our captive audience.
Appreciate it. Thank you. The, the last item is, um, town committee priorities. So what, um, what I wanted to do this year before committees kind of start in earnest, uh, is just have a general discussion based on your discussions with the chairs on what are the priorities for each committee this year? So that we can be understanding of what the other committees are working on, see if there might be some synergies. And also, um, if there's a general agreement that, that those should be the priorities for that committee. So, um, whoever like to start, do you want to start with long range and?
Well, you've just been talking about all the, all of the priorities for, uh, long range planning, um, that, you know, that is our remit this year, uh, for this year is, um, you know, tracking, uh, tracking what's going on with long range planning, certainly within our town, um, around Bethesda. I'm also, um, a member again of the MML Legislative Committee, where we'll be tracking, uh, state legislation that may impact, um, uh, our town and municipalities like ours. So I would say our, our goals are to support the council, um, on tracking all of these issues.
Is there anything that you all like information, because this is a big meaty thing. So what would help you all in terms of information coming out of the long range planning committee? Is it, you know, because everything's happening so rapidly? Is there? I don't know. I'm just asking.
As land use. Oh, yeah. So I would have.
In respect to the ZTA work, is that really in both committees? Or how, how are you guys splitting that up? Or you just want to see it as a joint committee activity?
No, it, it, we look to long range planning for that.
Okay.
But we're, we're the operational end of it. So we're, we're looking at, you know, one of the, yeah, so we're looking at, at things like multi-family house, you know, what do we need to do to the code? Land use, parts of the code that, that result from whatever comes out of the multi-family housing initiatives.
Like the pattern books, when the pattern books come out.
Yeah.
Will that be looked at by both committees?
We could look at that because those are going to, I mean, one of the things, what, yeah, but those are, and tho, those are important because, but we need them first. And, and then, and, and it's one of our problems. We, we, can I, can I inter, interrupt with some of this stuff? So we've looked at the code, um, in terms of what do we need to change to go from single-family residential to multi-family to making it residential, not just single-family. And so we've done a lot of the code cleanup, which was, which is fairly simple. You know, there's some things which are fine. But until they get the details, you don't, we, we, we can't iron out some of the other ones, which are going to be more complicated. So we're relying upon, you know, we, we're waiting essentially for that, for that. But we've already done a lot of the code cleanup for moving from single-family to residential. And we submitted, the committee submitted something last fall and we haven't acted on it yet. But, um, so we need to re, re, reinvigorate it.
Should I forget? I know we've had a couple of emails about this. Are we introducing this in October or for discussion?
I would, I would, there's no reason not to bring it up. I mean, unless, except for the fact that it's not complete. You know, and it, it, because it's going to rely on a lot of what happens in the final analysis of ZTA. Because of, or the state exemption, you know, right? So, um, so that, that's it. So the committee is working on those things around the periphery until we get the details. And we've, and we've submitted something already, so we can bring that up.
Correct.
Okay.
Why have a little comment here? One of the things that Irene, you've often noted is how eager we are to get more participation and more residents thinking about these issues. So my mind, that's a value of having both committees members be engaged in thinking about things like the pattern books and so forth. Because just gets more residents actually be thinking about this stuff rather than inside the single silence of just my, my.
We can do that. I mean, as those pattern, I don't have any confidence that the pattern book's going to be out for another year. So, yeah, so, so, yeah, so it, it, it.
Even though, by the way, one of the comments I heard recently was that the, uh, planning council should demand that the planning books be in, be ready at the time they vote.
Yeah.
It's actually a lot of sense, uh, but.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Okay. I mean it. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, no, that's fine. Yeah. I had another question though, feeling with Bethesda Market Park. And I talked a little bit about this with Irene, but the, I'm just brainstorming here a bit. Last year, everything about it was, that we took through the long range planning committee because it was all sort of upstream really. But now it is really coming downstream and, and, and so there are going to be a lot of issues dealing with traffic. That's kind of one silent. There'll be other issues dealing with park design. And that potentially can involve climate environment, um, as well as long range planning. I don't really think involves land use particularly, but the point is I'm trying to begin to think about whether there is some multi-committee activity to make sure that we get residents broadly aware of and thinking about the things. Uh, to give you one example, one of the really major comments that was made by a lot of residents about, about the, the dog zone, but not have any artificial turf at all. And then actually the county's picked up on that, to their credit. They, 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 they told me as the landscape architect, I said to developers that the county really doesn't want to see that. But we don't know where those plans will come out. And maybe at the end of the day, there is some portion of that dog run, which for reasons of maintenance and, you know, has to have something other than turf or, you know. So you can imagine wanting to have a discussion with town residents. And, and rather than just being a huck, I'm trying to think about what's the right way to channel that. And so obviously working with our committees would be desirable. And now is that a climate environment? Is that long range planning? Is that both? I don't know. I'm just throwing that out there.
And, and actually, you know, now that you've mentioned that Barney, I'm wondering if that might not be, if it might not be appropriate to have something like the Corso Special Committee that kind of pull together people from a lot of different disciplines and, and some other folks who weren't involved on either long range planning or land use. I suspect that, um, certainly with respect to traffic or even construction staging, we're going to have to have local, you know, the pe, the, the near neighbors who are most affected probably also need to be involved in, you know, whatever discussion of agreements that we come to with the county and the developer on construction after that happens as well. So, yeah, that makes sense to me that we, you know, make sure we've got maybe a person from each committee or we have some kind of overlap or we have a subcommittee that focuses on that issue.
It's just hard to do that plus ensure that there isn't an open meetings violation. Because it, it, something like Bethesda Market Park that might involve multiple committees could create a problem if it's like climate environment, you as Bethesda Market Park.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But I mean, it, but committee meetings are all open anyway and we have to declare them. And so what I'm saying is that, you know, it may make sense when we get to that point that we have a subcommittee that also has to be open.
Yes.
I, I want, yeah, once, it, as demonstrated by Corso, once we get to the site, they start developing the site plan. Um, and you get the, you know, the first draft of the site plan and then you get to look at it, whatever. Uh, it, 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 it takes a, a community, you know, it's not just one committee. It's a, it's probably expertise across many areas that need to be brought together, looking at the whole. So, yeah, maybe we could do that with Bethesda Market Park. You create a, you know, special.
Or, or pattern book review or something like that. Okay. I'll go next. Um, thanks to Joy's work with the Climate and Environment Committee. Last year, they actually had defined some priorities and, and kind of reaffirmed them in, in the, um, first meeting of the year a couple of weeks ago. So there are three priorities for, proposed priorities for the committee. The first is, um, from sustainable landscaping and use of native plants. Uh, so this is kind of a campaign effort, uh, to, for those that may not know that there's, uh, you know, those programs that we do have, uh, to encourage native planting. But in it, in kind of a sub point of that is there's an interest in gain in, in, in exploring avenues to gain certification, specifically a community wildlife habitat certification. So there are a number of homes in the town presently that are certified as, uh, wildlife habitats. And it's through the, um, uh, the National Wildlife. And it's through the, um, uh, the National Wildlife Federation. But they've just recently created a certification for entire entities. So the, not, no decisions have been made, but just the idea of exploring to see how feasible that would be for the town. Um, and, you know, based on what we have control over versus interest versus expense versus, you know, all these different things. So, um, wanted to just put that out there, if that's something that is, is okay or not. Yeah, yeah, it, obviously more information is needed, um, but just the idea that they're encouraged to go ahead and, and, and explore this as an opportunity, in addition to the idea of sustainable plantings and landscaping to encourage that. The second is promoting solar and residential electrification. Um, and that's through a combination of, um, they had the EcoFest last year, or earlier this year, that was successful. Um, more kind of home tours, uh, that there's a home that's just two weeks away from a person moving in. She's a member of the, the committee and, um, the, it's off the grid. The house is entirely off the grid, and so she's very much, yes.
Yeah, she put up, she put up those Tesla solar tiles, no, well, they're taught, instead of having panels.
On the roof.
It's.
She's giving, she's giving more already to the county and she hasn't even.
It's, they look, it looks spectacular, it's not panels, it's the, it looks like a roof. But they're all solar, they're all solar energized.
On a tour, yeah, so she's more than willing. Um, so creating an attention-getting campaign to promote electrification. Um, maybe some talks on how to join community solar, uh, as a kind of a, an event. There is talk of exploring option for solar canopy here at the Lawton Center. And like a portion of the Lawton Center having that, that canopy, so it allows for people to plug in in addition to generating electricity.
I have had people ask me about maybe doing that.
Over the, yeah, not the entire parking lot, because I did say, look, it's used for events and there are trucks that come through, but maybe a portion of it, you know? But obviously, it's county land, so we don't have, it'd be a ton of bureaucracy if we did this. Um, but they're very excited about, you know, giving back, um.
I encourage that it be, there's a lot of economic compliance, there are a lot of different plans out there. It takes a lot of work to represent that clearly, and so having events where the, it's always fun to see a home, so that's great. But having events that really lay out the dollars and cents and what the options are.
Well, I think they're thinking as well about, like, I, I personally, our household subscribes to Neighborhood Sun. And what that effectively means is we, we pay Neighborhood Sun, that generates electricity, gives back to Pepco. And up until two months ago, um, I, we receive checks every month from Pepco. Uh, and we've been in this for two, three years, so I haven't paid, I've paid a bill to, to, um, uh, Neighborhood Sun, but I've always gotten money back from Pepco. So, uh, it, it. It is a community solar program, so it's a subscription type of thing. So it, it's educating people, not so much as ones that, you know, don't want to go down the road of, of solar panels, but we want to be involved in some other way. It's all helps a little bit, um, and the.
People, in my experience, people could even use some advice about like, you know, a lot of people have, like I do, like Spanish tile roofs. People want to understand what the options are, if they, if they, you know, should they go with like that? What you're doing, or is there any way to?
Is there another, yeah, it was a very popular table, they were in that corner during EcoFest, and people were really jazzed up about it. So let's take advantage of that. And the third and final, um, uh, focus for the, for the, uh, committee is to conduct a survey of town residents on their current electricification efforts. Uh, it could be expanded further on just overall, anything that is climate change related to get a feel for what people are doing and what the interest might be for other programs that the Climate and Environment Committee could, um, host, sponsor, educate in the future. But it would be a town-wide survey, so I know sometimes surveys get, get a, you know, and we might need to incentivize residents to even participate in such a survey, um, but just.
Can I go back to the solar initiative a little bit? And I, I've thought about this a lot, because I have a car that's getting ready to, to die, I think, in another year or two. And I, and I, and I want to, you know, purchase an electric vehicle. But to do it, I want to, I want to have a decent charging station. And, um, it, for me, it means, you know, digging up my backyard and putting in a separate panel and all kinds of stuff. So it becomes quite expensive, but I, I don't want to leave that part of it out, the electrification, uh, vehicle electrification part. And maybe have them think about ways that we could encourage, you know, electric vehicles and maybe even consider subsidizing charging stations.
Heat pumps.
Yeah, heat pumps.
There was no option. Getting another area, but we aren't cheap, it's ten thousand dollars. And, but, I know from my background, it's that, I've got the heat pumps. I'm not talking about geothermal heat pumps. I've improved dramatically over the last six years, I'm incredibly efficient. Are able to generate that, could be, even in finance, there are a lot of these cars, there's some like concrete in the state. And also, a lot of utilities states have really ambitious programs to expand, say, heat pumps. But it takes a lot of thinking, because you have to consider, you know, how you contribute to heat to your house. But you do, because of duct system, you have a ductless system, so there's a lot of thought about it. And you want people to be aware of it, thought about it, and, you know, they may still not want to immediately act because they still have some years left, that's a big deal. But on the other hand, it will be that when they do need a system, they're actually in a position, which unfortunately we're not, to, you know, go in a different direction. But it's a dramatic reduction, it's something like this, one of the crucial things to do. So, um, I would encourage if the committee wants to take that on some issues.
Okay.
Would you, with a survey, I'm all in favor of a survey on this, um, I, I, I think there would be a lot of interest in people answering this. Especially if they know what the outcome is going to be.
Yeah.
We're gonna have some actionable items to provide more information, you can consider policy incentives and things like that. Would you, if you're asking about electrification, would it be like you ask people, you know, have you installed the heat pump? Are you considering installing?
Exactly.
Kind of like the state of.
Correct, it's the state of, yeah, so there isn't going to be, um, any judgment, it's just gonna be.
Just to find out.
Find out what people are interested in.
Considering.
Exactly. Yeah, then we're really gonna have to figure out some incentive, like payment incentive or raffle incentive or something to make sure people can, uh, will answer it, because otherwise it'll be very low, yeah. Okay, so you're up.
All right, um, public services, uh, I think sort of in, in the box kind of stuff. The area that's safe here, I think, the largest is the traffic on Hill.
Yes, can you turn on your mic just a? That, that other hill that's hard to.
Between, between Maple and, and East.
And East.
Oh, I see.
Okay, yeah, I know what you mean.
It's, the streets narrow, there's parking allowed, and you're going up and over a hump, and residents complain about it all the time. Uh, so there are a number of things that the committee has thought of, I guess there's been some conversations in the past. But I think, in thinking about the town as a whole, that probably remains the area, Dave, I don't know if you have a different view, but, but perhaps the one that is the most at the bull's eye of, of, of concerns. Um, other things sort of come more routinely, but I think that's one that deserves focus. And the other, uh, this acceptable to the council is to let the committee work on the traffic issues associated with the, uh, Market Park, Bethesda Market Park. There's several people in the committee who, you know, have knowledge about traffic, think about it, and, uh, obviously it takes us outside the town boundaries, but only by a block. But they seem to be, to me, the logical people to get engaged in thinking about that, those would be the two.
Um, so, Community Relations, um, is mine. And I, I regret that I was unfortunately not able to attend their kind of organizing meeting last week, because I was unavoidably out of town. But I did, uh, I attended almost all of the meetings in the last 12 months. And, and I did, um, see some notes and discussion after the meeting last Wednesday. And, um, you know, a couple of the programs that have been, but first of all, we're obviously going to keep some of the cornerstone things that, that we do, um, like, um, the Chili Night and the, um, Spring Festival and of course, the Fourth of July, um, we're maybe looking for a different caterer for the Fourth of July. I at least am encouraging that very strongly, um, and, and we are, uh, we're also continuing, um, one of the newer programs is the Roundhouse Theater, um, discussion groups, which have had huge.
Those are excellent, those are really good.
Interest, and we're gonna, we've started to reserve, um, this space for discussion after, because it's, we get so much interest in there. So many people, it gets harder to host in a, in a home, um, so that's been really good. The book club continues, um, and a couple of new additions last year, the Lego contest with the kids. I think we are, we are going to put back on the books.
Howard, if that's the Howard.
I know, I know.
If there's any upper age limit to the definition of kids.
Howard entered.
Howard, yeah.
Um, that was really fun, and, um, uh, so it, we've, we're always trying to think of ideas to get more people involved in different age groups. We of course have the, the coffees for people to come to the playground with their kids and that kind of thing. Um, so, uh, we're always happy to take new ideas and do things that seem to have a lot of support in the town. Um, they get a cross-section of people out, rather than, we love to see the familiar faces, but we like to see new ones too, so.
Can I make one second, comment that's lying forth, which is very successful, as it always is, but there is one thing which we are stuck with that is so irritating, not the caterers per se, but the, how long it takes to get the food.
This is part of it, I mean, I think I, I really want to talk to Rocklands or one of the other.
Well, I, we were told it was a county regulation about serving.
Yeah, but we could do, that, that's different, what I'm talking about is we could set up two tables, I mean, like.
I'm sure it's a solvable problem, thank you, great, that's all I'm asking for.
Sorry, two tables or one table and both sides?
Can't do both sides, because of county regulation now, it would have to, it would have to be two tables.
By the way, our county, when I explained this to our county executive who showed up for that, he's, he's simple, he said, that's ridiculous. I don't know, but obviously, he wouldn't have any way to change that, I suppose.
It also strikes me, so when we were talking in, uh, Climate and Environment last year, that the, you know, that a, a townwide survey on, you know, where people are with respect to electrification is a great way to engage residents in like what's going on in town. And it's a good way to get people who, you know, maybe like some of the folks who were sitting here with their jaws on the ground when I started talking about what's going on with the Dana Blasing. Those are not the people who would come maybe to the Fall, the Spring Fest or Fall Fest, because they don't have little kids. Um, but, y- y- you know, and a number of the people that we did see at EcoFest uh, weren't the same people that I've seen at Fourth of July or other events. So it's just, you know, I just want to mention that there are a lot of ways to engage residents, not only, um, you know, in physical, you know, in, in face-to-face meetings, but certainly on something where you participate in something and then you get data on, you know, who are we in this town, which I think is also.
I, I also think that we should maybe think about redoubling our efforts to, um, remind people about the block parties that we can help them with. I was out for a walk this weekend, and, uh, there were like two going on at the same time, which was so cool. I was so happy to see that, and they were both really, really well-attended. Um, so that's, that's something else that I think can get people, um, people who aren't normally involved really more involved with their neighbors, it's just on their block, it's hard to ignore it.
I think, I mean, we have 25 new volunteers to our committees this year. Um, and they run from, I just moved into the town, I'm trying to get all two, I've lived in the town forever, I'm retired and I have more time. And, um, so it's 75 volunteers that we have, and if you're, I hope, I think you're all coming tomorrow for the, for the event. And you're, and, and, but basically, it's.
Are you gonna have good food?
I'm sorry?
Can we get through the, through the line in 30 minutes?
Plenty of food, plenty of wine. Hungry, um, uh, I forgot my, my.
Seventy-five volunteers.
Seventy-five new volunteers, and, and there's gonna be kind of a challenge that I give to each of them to say, you need to be talking with your neighbors about what you're doing, like what got you involved, what are you passionate about? Um, so that they can learn more about these different events and other things that are going on, and not come in because they were upset about something and, and ended up learning a lot more than they.
Well, it just, it, it highlights, and we've talked about this before, about communication. Here we are in the middle of this deliberation on the county zoning initiative. The people that are most affected, as an example, we're all surprised.
Yeah.
How can that be? I mean, how, we put it in every publication, we highlight it, and with, I don't know how you get around getting things to people so that they can participate more actively in the, the, the ongoings in the community.
If you find, figure that out, let me know.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what more you could do. I mean, it's just, it's just, I almost said, what the hell have we been thinking, you know, where can we find the information? Well, it's.
Maybe we have to get everybody angry to come in here and then.
It just is very frustrating.
Okay, uh, did you, I know, sorry.
Well, I, I started out that, which is, you know, we've, we're continuing to work on code cleanup. And, and, and that will extend even more so as we get more granularity on the, on these other county initiatives. Some of them are, and, and a lot of them are becoming, as we talk about them in the committee, they're much more complex than we start out thinking about them, things like impervious surfaces on, in, in lots. And, uh, I mean, it, it, just, we're dealing with stormwater management. We have crafted a stormwater management, um, document. We've given it, uh, we want to get comments from the water board before we bring it here to, to discuss it. Um, so that's, that's, that's imminent, we're, we're, that's probably going to come up in the next month or so. We're, we're looking at the devising and recommend, and making recommendations on the impervious surface issues in, in the ordinance. And one of the other things is the setbacks for rear and side lots. So they're, they want to look at that whole issue as well.
To what end, because I, we've reviewed that before.
They, because of the things like, what do you do if there's a duplex on there?
Oh, okay, okay, whether, whether we would change our.
Do we want to change the, yeah, now, before.
Oh, I see.
So that we don't make it, so we can do it sooner and then not be impacted by making it no less restrictive than. Yeah, no more restrictive.
Okay.
So that's, you know, there, that, those are the.
Are you gonna look at the lookback period as well for projects?
Yes, that, that's part, that, that adds the complicat- the complexity to things like stormwater.
Well, yes, but, but either way. Well, yes, but, but either way, it's happening as a, as an issue with single family homes. So I just wasn't sure, like that could, that's something that could change prior to any sort of multifamily change. Okay.
Yeah, and that's, we, we, we did look at that in the, like the stormwater, um, or the, um. What, yeah, it was the water stuff. So that's.
Okay, so I guess we'll leave it to you guys when you're ready to bring something to the council. Like you, in terms of recommendations or whatever to.
Tell you.
As you know, I love sending emails and multiple emails about things, so. Um, let's just make sure we're in contact as much as possible as things are moving so fast.
That's a very good discussion. Thank you for bringing it up. And I, I'll think further about. Pieces of the Bethesda Market Park and I, 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 I have some ambivalence about a special committee. There's some history to that. But on the other hand, trying to make sure there's some focus to the, where, to where. We as a council can look to resident input that we want to get on the different, that remains very important. And so I just want to mull that over a bit, come up with some ideas, get back to.
All right, um, anything else, any other thing? We are adjourned.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Howard. Thanks, Todd. Thank you, Dave.